Yes, let's go ahead and get started. This is the Vermont State Colleges Board Finance and Facilities Committee. Duly called for four in the afternoon on June 17th. My name is Church Heinz. I'm happy to chair this committee. We have a good number of trustees as well as college presidents and the chancellor and her staff here. Welcome, everybody. I'd also like to extend a particular welcome to Ryan Cooney, who on my screen is in the upper right-hand corner. Ryan is our newest trustee, who is a student at Vermont Tech in the Professional Pilots Program. So he's going to be entertaining us over the next year with tales of cerus and cumulus and all of those things. And he also, before he came to Vermont Tech, was the student school board member for Springfield, where he, when he and I were first talking, he was talking about looking forward to serving on our board because of his experience in building local school budgets. So this may be his first meeting with us, but he's not a neophyte when it comes to the work of this committee. So again, welcome, Ryan.
Thank you, Church. Glad to be here.
I think I'd also point out that this is a little bit of comings and goings. Unless we are pleasantly surprised, otherwise, this will be trustee Florrie's final finance committee meeting. And what can I say, Peg? I was thinking about you the other day and wondering how long it's been since, as a trustee, we've had somebody who would really meet the definition of a non-traditional student. Someone who achieved her professional license and credentials is the word I was looking for. Someone who achieved her credentials in a most non-traditional manner and has put them to such great use and been a wonderful example to all of us. And we appreciate that. And this is probably, by my count, Steve probably as a very quantitative kind of guy, probably knows exactly. But I'm guessing this is roughly the 36th or 37th finance committee meeting, Steve, that you have worked with us on. Probably not that you're counting, but I wouldn't be surprised if you do.
It's funny, I've got folders. I could count them, but I hadn't thought of it that way. So, but it wouldn't surprise me.
Well, we're going to, we're going to touch today's meeting on the fiscal 2020 and 2021 financial work of this, of the VSC. And by my count, fiscal 21 will be the sixth fiscal cycle that will have the Steve Wyslawski fingerprint on it.
Oh, boy.
That is stamina, determination, resilience. And Steve, you've served this committee very, very well.
Thank you.
You've been loyal, diligent. And I think everyone agree, you've been thorough. We have never lacked for information.
Thank you.
So we will call to order and get started right now. We're going to do one adjustment to the agenda to make it a little easier logistically and also easier for people who are watching us. We have an executive session scheduled today to discuss some real estate matters. We will go into executive session for that, but rather than disrupt the front end of our meeting, I've spoken with our legal counsel and agrees that we can, we could move the executive session to the very end of our meeting so that we can get through the rest of our agenda without having to skip on and skip, skip off through the various Zoom addresses. Steve, anything that we need to think about that before we actually get into the order of the day?
I'd say nothing in particular. It was pretty, you know, covered in the, in the memo, excepting for the consent agenda. There were four major topics that I wanted to touch on with the committee that include several approval items. And then I just want to not lose sight that I do have two brief items in the other business category that are not discussed in the agenda that I want to bring to the committee's attention before we go into then the executive session.
Okay, let's be, don't let me forget that. Okay, so let's go ahead and get started. We have the minutes for the June 1st meeting of this committee that have been distributed. May we have a motion to accept the minutes of the June 1st meeting, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any edits, corrections, additions, deletions to the minutes as distributed? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the minutes for the June 1st Finance and Facilities Committee meeting, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Then we will move to agenda item number four, I believe, Steve, to discuss and approve resolutions that would waive policy 410 and policy 433. The resolution, I believe, appears on committee materials, page 11. You might want to just double check that and see if that's right.
Yeah, for policy 410, it is on page 11. And for policy 433, where we're merely asking for waiver of a sentence of that policy, that resolution appears on page 15.
Thank you, Steve. Why don't you take it from here?
Certainly. So policy 410 might be familiar to the committee from a good year ago, where we did a bit of an archaeological expedition. At the time, it was, I believe, our oldest or second oldest policy last, having been updated in 1999. And the policy has to do with financial aid and other financial awards. And where maybe 90% of it or more applies is to discounting. And as it turns out, back in the, you know, mid to late 90s, we had almost no discounting. And the controversial proposal at the time was to move the limit, the policy limit on discounting from 1% to 5%. Well, now, as folks are well aware, in the ensuing two decades, discounting has accelerated tremendously. And some of our private sector counterparts have discount rates on their sticker price tuition upwards of 50 or 60%. VSC is fortunate that we haven't had to do that nearly as much. But our out-of-state tuition is pretty well up there. And the upshot is that, you know, three of our four institutions are out of compliance with this policy. And that was the case last year and candidly was probably the case for a number of years prior to that. So just as a, as a practical matter, if we are aware of a policy non-compliance, we don't want to take that into the end of the fiscal year because that policy could be selected by the auditors. They could ask if we're complying with it, which of course we're not. So we had also taken as, as work for the Business Affairs Council and under my lead to try to propose an amendment to that policy. Originally, it actually asked that we just strike the policy for being out of date. But the sense of the committee was that it would be useful to receive information on our discounting nonetheless, like in-state versus out-of-state, you know, merit versus non-merit-based, just a summary report. And that's what we were endeavoring to create. But again, that is my fault that we did not get to that this year. And so we find ourselves, of course, closing in on June 30, still not compliant with this policy. We did receive a waiver for the policy, which was the year 19. And this resolution on page 11 requests a waiver, an additional waiver of the policy for fiscal year 20, the current fiscal year, for the express purpose of the audit. And it does propose that we will continue to keep this on the radar and attempt to amend as opposed to remove the policy.
To keep us moving, could someone look at the resolution on page 11? And if you're comfortable, make a motion that we adopt it, then we can talk about it.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Moved and seconded. Can we have any thoughts or questions for Steve on the resolution pertaining to waiver of policy 410? Linda?
I'm I understand why, for audit reasons, Steve wants to be sure there's a waiver of the policy. As a trustee, I'm concerned about us not having a way of monitoring discounting, discount, because discounting is in fact how many institutions have, other institutions have gotten themselves into financial trouble they could not come out of. And I'm pretty sure that Jim Page, in his report, made a real point about saying that the board should in fact be monitoring discounting and how much it's given away and how much we discount and how much revenue we're losing to that way. So I want to be sure that we in fact keep this as a, and actually move it up in priority as far as something that we as the board are more informed of.
Thank you, Linda. I think one of the, if I recall that portion of Jim's, of Jim Page's report, he was particularly concerned about, this would be a terrible overstatement, discounting wars between our own institutions in the effort to garner enrollment. Other thoughts, questions, or concerns about this resolution? Hearing none to keep things moving. All those in favor of adopting the resolution as it appears on page 11, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? We have approved the resolution. Steve, please take us to the resolution on page 15.
And so this one pertains to the debt management policy, policy 433. And if I would actually, if I could scroll ahead to page 17, which actually is the second page of the three-page policy in question, under the heading structuring, the third element there says that debt principal shall amortize such that annual debt service on a total portfolio basis is either level or declining over time and not increasing. And as a practical matter, this was an attempt to avoid the situation that we had a number of years ago, where we had a large balloon payment in our debt profile. I believe it occurred in 2028. And so one of the things that we did in 2017 was to amortize that balloon for another 10 years and basically smooth out the debt service. And so the intent of this provision is to make sure that we don't have any abrupt year-over-year jumps in our debt service that we can't handle budgetarily. Now, fast forward to 2020, and for a number of what I would consider prudent reasons, we decided to realize the savings from the debt refinancing in the front end of the bond sale. So we basically refinanced a 2010 bond issue that had extended out 30 years with a 2020 bond issue that extended for the remaining 20 years of that, of that bond issue. And a sort of default way to realize the savings would just have been to realize, and the total savings was $5.4 million nominally, would be to realize that in level increments in each of those 20 years. But the thought was that if we instead could realize the savings upfront, particularly to help us with investments and to just provide a little bit of budgetary relief going into a tough enrollment year, that that would be preferable. And so the way to do that is to defer, I mean, with, with bonds, you have just like a mortgage, your semi-annual and annual payments have principal components and interest components. And so the way to frontload your savings is to defer the principal payments for the first several years. But by doing that, what happens is that you do get then at the end of that deferral, a jump in your debt service. Not nearly like the balloon that we had been facing several years ago, but there will be a little bit of a jump. And so, and in particular, under the strict provision of level or declining payments, it is the case that actually fiscal 2025 is our, what we call our maximum annual debt service of about $9.3 million. So in the years preceding that, we have about an $8 million debt service payment. So we also, after the 2017 bonds, we had similarly deferred principal in the front end. And we had similarly security waiver, but it was only through the end of fiscal year 2021. And so the resolution on page 15 is basically extending that existing forbearance through fiscal 2024. And then once we're in fiscal 2025, at the beginning of fiscal 2025, we will have a level of declining debt service once again.
Okay. For the purpose of discussion, can some, can someone look at the resolution on page 15 and turn it into a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Peg.
Second.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lynn. Comments, questions for Steve about the resolution pertaining to a provision in policy 433? David?
Steve, just so I understand the policy, is the practical impact of the policy that, and I ask this in a, in a, in, you know, an environment that we're not likely to do this, but if we wanted to bond for capital improvements, does this mean we would have to wait until we had other debt roll off before we could do so?
No, David, but I think what it means is that if you had a sort of a dip in debt service, if that's, you know, if you found a situation where you had lower debt service in fiscal '21, '22, '23, and '24, and then you were to do a new bond issue, you'd be obliged to frontload the debt service of the new bond issue so that the total portfolio, the new bond issue added to the existing bond issues had aggregate level or declining debt service. And so what this waiver does is, you know, basically relieves you of having to do that. However, it does say that if you were going to do an additional bond issue, say in 2025, if you did not use a basically level debt service approach or level or declining debt service approach, you would again need to waive this policy or just scrap that provision of the policy. But the idea was to try to avoid a situation, like again, number one, the VSC's debt profile was four years ago, where we had a large, like a $43 million balloon payment in one year that simply was not in our capacity to pay. Another situation might be like, I know that the state of, the state of Vermont's actuarial reports, this isn't so much debt, but it's the actuarial liability. They actually have a 30-year amortization schedule that defrays the unfunded liability portion. And that schedule uses payments that increase by 3% every year. The theory there is, well, there's consumer price inflation, so that's a nominal number, but on an inflation-adjusted number, these are level. That number used to be 5% increases. So basically you get this ascending debt profile in time. But the problem is that that does, first of all, consumer price inflation has been, I think, south of 2% for the last 20 years on a compound basis. But two, just in nominal terms, your debt service increases every year in that scenario. So this is designed to constrain it.
Well, that also assumes that tax revenues go up every year.
It does.
Which they don't.
Which, Linda?
I personally wonder if it's a good provision to have in there. This, having been on the board when we actually put that balloon loan on, it was financial crisis. We wanted to go ahead and do capital improvements that had been long planned by the schools. And at that point in time, we could still afford to do it. And TD gave us a loan that would let us do it. But, and the only terms you could get was with that balloon payment. But it did let us accomplish something the schools thought was very important still to do. And we definitely were making the assumption that we would have the opportunity to, before the balloon came due, refinance in a better interest rate environment, which is what happened. But I also get that that might not have happened and it could have been a much worse situation. So tie in our hands so that in certain circumstances, we can't take advantage of or do things that we think are necessary to do. I hear it now, I'm thinking, is that smart? I'm not so sure it is.
I guess to that, I would say, Linda, you know, the board is empowered to change that policy at any time. It's more of a break than it is a hard, you know, like as in tapping the brakes as opposed to a hard prohibition. It's not a
Then waive it.
The state, for example, the state of Vermont, it's statutory. You must have, and actually it's level principal. It's not level debt service. So they actually have declining debt service as a matter of law. So, but I agree with your point, Linda, you know, that this, this potentially constrains, but if it were an emergency similar to '08 or '09, it would be well within the board's power to also waive this.
Okay, thank you. Further questions or thoughts? David?
David, you're on mute.
I have a window in my office and I'm waving to staff as they go by. Sorry.
Okay.
That's a good thing.
That's fine. We'll bear that in mind. We're going to ignore you now for the rest of the meeting. We're going to assume that's what you're doing. Any further thoughts or questions on the resolution on page 15? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the motion to adopt the resolution as it appears on page 15, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have adopted the resolution. Thank you, Steve. This last discussion makes me wonder how many, how many people are still alive who remembers the anguish in the state house over the 90% rule? Maybe a couple of us. I remember M. Hebert sitting at the Eboard, talking about the, the beauty of that rule and why we should never take it away. Makes me feel like a very old man. We next turn to item, item numbered five on our agenda, the legislative update. This is a very important update. This is a critical juncture in the extended session in Montpelier. And who's going to take the lead on this, Steve? You, Sophie, who, who will guide us through this one?
Well, I guess, Mr. Chair, there are three things or two things, depending how you look at it. So we have both the treasurer's report and Jim Page's report for information and discussion. But we also thought that a legislative update would, I mean, because sort of the legislative response somewhat flowed from these reports and even the efforts while these reports were still being created. Maybe it would be helpful, Sophie, would you like to, because I think you're probably more plugged in than any of us as to the evolution of the legislative session. Do you want to give a brief update?
Sure. So my update is really, as of yesterday, I'm not, I haven't had a chance to kind of catch up today. But we did the Budget Adjustment Act, Act Two, was just signed by the governor. Under that act, we are getting 12.5 million in coronavirus relief funds that have to be spent or at least planned to spend this fiscal year, FY '20. We're waiting on the administration to come up with guidance on how those can be spent and to provide the mechanism by which we'll report back. It'll, it'll be kind of in a grant format, so we're going to have to report back when we use those funds. So we're still waiting on guidance on that. But the colleges are working on what they're going to do with that 12.5 million. They had already provided extensive information to the state house about their need for COVID-related relief. But we want to make sure, again, bearing in mind some of the guidance that was provided by Jim Page in his report, that we're thoughtful about how that money is spent. 5.1 million of it will be going to refill the expenditures that were made by the colleges for room and board. But there were other pieces to it, including costs related to personal protective equipment, facilities modifications, a whole variety, remote instruction. So we're just working, we're going to be working with the BAC to make sure that those funds, when they go out to the colleges, are consistent with the, the requirements from the state and also consistent with what they had said they would be spending the money on. But we also want to be thoughtful so that we're all using it in a way that makes sense. We're not all using it in different ways, which I think was the warning that Jim Page had in his report. So the Q1 transitional budget has, has, was being worked on yesterday with the Senate Appropriations Committee. My, my last recollection of where we're at on that is they're proposing, it already had $15 million of CRF funding, the coronavirus relief funding for the VSC for FY '21. The Senate Appropriations Committee was looking to increase that up to 22,000, actually just short of 23,000, 22,758. And I think part of that was a thought that they could use CRF funds to help with bridge funding. I have a concern about that because there are restrictions in what you can do with the CRF funds. And I think the, the bridge funds that we need are not solely for coronavirus relief. So I do have a concern about that. The decision to allocate bridge funding in the form of CRF funds rather than in general funds. My understanding is that they were still looking at providing some money out of the general fund for bridge funding. And I think that they're going to be revisiting this when they come back in August. Again, some of the folks, some of our legislative trustees may have more information on that right now. The other piece is the capital bill, which is, we have 2 million in that, and that looks like it's just going, it's just moving forward. There doesn't seem to be much debate or dispute about that. So that seems to be moving forward. There is a bill dealing with gender balance on the VSC board. It was really targeted at the University of Vermont, whose board is, I don't remember off the top of my head, but it's maybe 22 men, five women, something like that, quite significant imbalance. There were some changes made to that proposed legislation that it's more aspirational than mathematical. But we would need to be reporting, the VSC would need to report to the legislature on the, the gender balance on the board. We know when we, when we do reports in January, that's what the proposal is anyway. The other piece I do want to flag, which is not really finance and facilities, but just so you're aware, is part of the proposal from the leadership regarding providing bridge funding was a concept that there would also be a blue ribbon commission that would be created. Initially, the idea was it would be for, to look at higher education in Vermont. Then it, in the House, House Education, they worked with NEBI, the New England Board of Higher Education, to come up with a proposal. Didn't call it a blue ribbon commission, called it a select committee. And it was for public higher education in Vermont. It had 22 members on it. The VSC had five members, UVM had two, VSAC had one. We were able to provide feedback because originally there was only, there was no representation from VSAC. And they had, I think, like 16 people or something from the VSC. It had like 60 plus people. It was kind of crazy. So it got streamlined. That was taken up by the Senate Education Committee yesterday. And there were pretty significant revisions made to it. My understanding is it went back to the House Education Committee this morning. I haven't had a chance to catch up on, on where they're at, but the Senate Education Committee made some pretty significant changes to it. The chair of that committee, Phil Baruth, had reached out last week and had asked me to provide him with information on all the task forces that we have going on. I had provided that to him. The Senate education version is much, is specifically focused on the VSC, not on, not on public higher education generally. We now have, would have six members on it. The number, total number of members would be down to fifteen with us having six members. But it's very much targeted on the VSC. It does recognize the three committees, task forces that are underway, which is the system-wide task force, VTC's transitional advisory task force, and NVU's, NVU Strong Advisory Committee Task Force. So I'm, I'm not sure what the House did with that today, but I do have concerns about the possibility that that's going to, you know, run into the efforts that we're undertaking. But I think the, Phil Baruth was certainly aware of that, and I've, I would need to go back and look at the language more closely, but that's still to be finalized. But my understanding is that's going to get dropped into the first quarter transitional budget when it's finalized. So that's just something to be aware of for all of us. And I don't know if you had anything else, Steve. Did I miss anything on the moving parts?
The, the biggies is, you know, notwithstanding that this, the supplemental budget adjustment is passed, we're still awaiting the assignment of an act and then the guidance from, from the fifth floor before we can draw funds. And, and then the supplement, the first quarter budget has a variety of sources of funding that you know, will lead to incorporate into our budget development, among other things, among, among other, you know, figuring out how we're allowed to spend it and which defrays enrollment declines versus which is to prepare ourselves for various configurations of educational delivery come the fall.
Does anyone have any questions about it? Or I don't know if any of the legislative trustees have any additional wisdom to share on terms of what's going on?
Sophie and I have talked about keeping an eye on the select committee portion of the quarter one budget bill to be sure that it's sensitive to the role and prerogatives of the Board of Trustees of the state colleges. As the statute is very clear, we are the governing body for the Vermont State Colleges. We're happy to receive advice. But we just need to be sure that there's some, that there is proper balance between the intent and language of the select committee and the, and the authority and responsibility of the board. Lynn?
Oh, yeah, Sophie, there not only was a select committee, there's also a steering group. I assume they got rid of the steering group. That was the five man, five person group that was going to supervise the select committee.
Yeah, that's still, that's still in the, the version that came down from the Senate. So I, I'm trying to remember, I think it's three people selected by the legislative leaders and then maybe two people from the governor to serve on the steering committee. And there's no indication that the VSC would necess, would have a representative on the steering committee. I mean, as it's, it's left up to the legislators and the governor, I believe, to, to select who's on the, on the steering committee.
So they kept that intact. That's how it was.
They did keep that intact, yes.
But they broke the committee down from twenty two to fifteen.
They did. And the other piece to add is, I think it still includes that there would be a hiring of an external consultant as well to work with the committee.
Yes, that was in there.
Okay. Anything else on legislative update? Sophie or Steve?
No.
Any questions from the committee? Then let's move to item six on our agenda. Discussion of the reports from Treasurer Beth Pierce and the Consultant James Page. Steve?
So if I could just give sort of an executive summary and then some of the key takeaways for me, but then I really would like to just turn it over to either the presidents and deans, if they have anything else to add, or any material updates since the reports were completed, and then, of course, solicit questions from the committee. So two reports, one by State Treasurer Beth Pierce, one by former Main System Chancellor Jim Page. Beth's report was simply, how big's the problem? And, and what are the, what's the range of potential deficits, given what we know? And given that there is a tremendous amount of uncertainty remaining going into the fall. And that was to be delivered to the General Assembly, just a quantification of the problem. And then Jim Page's report building, and he worked closely with Beth and basically adopted her numbers in total. But then additionally, he was to make a recommendation. And so first Beth's report, she had three scenarios. So there was a best middle, we called them a best middle scenario, a worst scenario. And then she decided, she thought it was really important to add a worst scenario. And so at the system level, those deficits were nineteen point three million, thirty six point three million, and then forty six point three million, with that last corresponding to not being able to deliver in-person instruction in the fall. In, in your board materials and committee materials, really the heart of the treasurer's report in my mind is pages twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, and twenty six. Page twenty three is just a restatement of our third quarter FY twenty twenty financials, reiterating that at that time, we were forecasting a five point seven million dollar budget deficit. And as sort of a dovetail with the legislative update, our view is that the Budget Adjustment Act, H five, nine, or nine fifty three, will provide adequate funds merely for the room and board reimbursement to just about close that deficit. So that twelve point five million, the first five point one or so is explicitly for room and board refunds. And then there's a couple hundred thousand of additional FY twenty expenses that will just about have us balanced. Of the remaining seven million and change, it is a question, how much of that is going to offset? How, how much of that is going to then move us into surplus as opposed to create additional expenses for us? So, you know, we're going to get twelve and a half million more of state funds in the revenue line. It's going to offset the five point seven million deficit, but there may be additional COVID-related expenses that accrue to the supply services and travel expense lines and what have you, so that it's not going to result in a seven million dollar surplus. It may just result in a larger budget that nonetheless has a revenue source to offset it. It may also be the case, and, and again, I don't mean to be indecisive about this, we just simply do not know yet whether those revenues are going to be realized in fiscal twenty or in fiscal twenty one. The expenditures, by and large, you know, we need to have a really good idea of what we're going to spend the money on, hopefully by the end of fiscal twenty. But we're not required to actually spend the money in, in fiscal twenty. That, money has to be spent by December thirtieth. So so that's, that's with respect to page twenty three is it's, it's notwithstanding the treasurer's report, we believe that the, the real story come Q four will be in the, the end of the fiscal year will be better than this. And then pages twenty four, twenty five, and twenty six will show you a revenue and expense presentation of those nineteen, thirty six, and forty six million dollar budget deficits. And to my mind, that's a pretty good, I'd call it a free, I'm sorry, a pre-first pass at fiscal twenty one, twenty one budget development. I mean, what you're basically getting is system level and institution level presentations. And I think these are as good a starting point as any for what I would recommend be first pass fiscal twenty one budgets at the, at a July special meeting of the Finance Committee. And then Jim Page's report, really the heart of his report is pages, and again, in my opinion, it's pages eighty to eighty two of your materials. And that is where Jim first recommends that thirty million be the legislative bridge funding. And that if in-person instruction cannot convene in the fall, then an additional ten point three million be identified, or a total of forty point three million of bridge funding. He limits to six million dollars what he sees as the colleges being able to realize, whether through expense reduction or dipping into reserves or some of each. But both he and the State Treasurer strongly recommended against the colleges having to dip too deeply into their reserves. And then the last piece is just that Jim kind of admonishes us to try to work from a system-level approach as much as we possibly can. So for example, if it's an information technology expenditure to beef up our ability to do distance education, online delivery, that that be in a coordinated fashion. And that seems pretty reasonable by my lights. So that's my executive summary and thoughts on those two reports. I guess I'd, I'd first ask anybody at the VSC, presidents, deans, cabinet, anything to add? And allowing for people to unmute. Then I, if hearing none, are there any questions from trustees with respect to the reports, either to me or to folks at the colleges?
Well, I just wanted to comment that it, I mean, my take on those reports are that they essentially have confirmed our, the validity of our internal numbers and then have essentially, you know, pushed forward, you know, some of these scenarios that we're likely to to, to encounter. And then I, I found Jim Page's commentary particularly valuable for directionally going forward on how we need to probably work together more so than ever before to accomplish our goals. I thought it was well done.
I, 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 the terms I, I chose, David, were affirming and informative.
And, and I might add, realistic.
Yep. I thi, I think we gained credibility in the State House because neither of them said that the state colleges are crying wolf. And, and that our, our, our numbers were solid and that to real credit to the BAC and their work as well as the work with Steve and his team and the, and the system office.
Looks like Lynn, do you have a question?
Yes, Steve, can you, I just want to clarify, you talk about the twelve and a half million from the state, that's COVID money from CRF?
Correct.
That's why it has to be spent before December of twenty twenty.
Correct.
By the end of December.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Steve, is the five million dollars still in the, five million dollars general funds still in the first quarter budget bill?
Last I looked, I, I just checked, and I, I know that the website is a little bit behind, but that was still in the unofficial version as passed the House, and it was still Jonathan Wolf's Legislative Update as of Monday. I believe augmented by seven and a half million of CRF money in the Senate. Sophie, was that right?
That's, that's my understanding, right, that, that they still had five million in bridge funding. And again, that's for the first quarter, which would indicate, you know, if you did the math, the twenty million. And then they were looking at seven point five million as additional bridge funding, but coming out of CRF funds. So yeah, so seven point five is, is what would get you to thirty. But I, yeah, it's a little fuzzy to me in terms of how much of that is general fund and how much of it ultimately will be CRF funds. But again, there's, there's a limit to how much we can spend as CRF funds. I mean, the general funds is going to be far more valuable to us than, than CRF funds, because if we don't use it for CRF-related and permitted uses, it will have to go back to the state. And then if the state doesn't use it, it will have to go back to the federal government.
Maybe just another observation on that first quarter budget is it also, the, the governors recommend had only twenty three percent for VSC. And the House and Senate have concurred to make that twenty five percent of our fiscal twenty appropriation. So basically, you know, just shy of eight million dollars. And then additionally, we'll be able to draw all of that in July, at least in the unofficial version of the bill, which is very helpful from a cash flow perspective. As opposed to having it parsed out month by month in the middle of the month through September.
So we shouldn't think that it's anything other than coincidence on the day after you leave office, Steve, our cash flow improves dramatically.
I, I think it's directly as a result of me leaving, Church.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions about the State Treasurer's report and the Jim Page report? Sophie and I are talking about when and how we might be able to have some opportunity for the board to dialogue with Jim Page. I understand right now he is still under contract with the General Assembly. But at some point, if he becomes a free agent, we may, we may want to have an opportunity for some dialogue with him. I had a conversation with some other people recently who know him and use the phrase, well, you know, he's quite a systems guy. He's a bit of a centrist. And I think some of his commentary reflected that. And I think it's, it's good for us to be thinking those same thoughts as well and, and thinking about the balance between what he calls centrifugal force and centrist force. Okay. Shall we move ahead then to a resolution on page eighty nine to, to approve an unusual item for this committee, probably may, maybe the first time ever, a transitional system first quarter budget? Could someone take a look at the resolution on page eighty nine? And if you're willing, create it, create a motion out of it?
I would move the FY two thousand twenty one Vermont State Colleges Systems Transitional First Quarter Budget.
Thank you, David. Do we have a second?
A second.
I guess seconded. Okay, Steve, why don't you walk us through your thinking on this and again, it, it sounds like we, we aren't the first to plow this meadow. There are a lot of other people who are doing, following it in a similar way. So we're not going to be, people aren't going to point to us and say, what were they thinking? Others that we respect a great deal are doing the same thing. Do you want to kind of brief us?
Yeah, and I think that, that's a really good point, Church. This is, there's nothing, there's nothing original about this. I, I tried very hard, first and foremost, to emulate what the state is doing and to a lesser extent, what the University of Vermont is doing with respect to their own budget development, recognizing that, you know, number one, our, our typical process, which would have spanned February to late May or early June, really had to take a, a, you know, sideline or be put on the sidelines as we responded to the COVID crisis and then to, you know, the, the kind of impending, impending budget challenges. So, but we are approaching the end of the fiscal year. Our current budget for fiscal twenty is only valid through the thirtieth of June. If you look at our Policy four oh three, which is system annual operating budget, it really doesn't contemplate anything other than a full year budget that spans from July one to June thirty. And then again, just sort of invoking, and we are entering the audit, our financial audit for fiscal twenty. While it's not the case that this would apply for fiscal twenty, it's actually fiscal twenty one. You know, we'd be in a situation, starting July first, of non-compliance with Policy four oh three if we didn't adopt something. So, and, and I guess, so I think of this as solving a couple of problem, problems. Number one is just to provide a spending authority, to the extent that our Policy four oh three does just that, it provides the chancellor's office and the colleges' spending authority for the fiscal year. the Chancellor's Office and the colleges' spending authority for the fiscal year, this allows us spending authority for at least the next three months. But I want to be careful to say that, that, you know, unlike our typical annual budgets, this is not designed to be a monitoring tool. So if we proved, and what I anticipate the full year fiscal 21 budgets will be is, is actually a a tool by which we then do quarterly financial reporting and see how we're doing compared to our revenue categories, our expense categories and our total position. This budget is merely a placeholder. So spending authority, number one. Two, to nonetheless make sure that we are compliant with Policy 403. And I, I don't think I've ever used this before, but in lieu of waiving Policy 403 and in lieu of waiving any specific part of Policy 403, I've merely said any aspect of Policy 403 notwithstanding. So I've, I've sort of invoked popularly used legislative language when there's, when there's something in statute we're not in compliance with. So, and then what was the choice of budget? And for that, I really looked to my colleagues on the BAC and their strong consensus was unlike the state, which just rolled forward the fiscal 20 budget, took one quarter of that for fiscal 21. What we instead opted to select was the Treasurer's Report best middle scenario. For the simple reason that that actually allows the largest amount of spending authority. You know, a, a best middle scenario means that you have the highest revenue in the best enrollment situation. And that has the, the highest, you know, spending amount that's attached with that. Each of the second or the worst, and then the worst scenarios have us to some degree taking evasive action because the enrollments are expected to be worse and then again even worse. So, so in lieu of just taking one quarter of last year's budget, we decided to take one quarter or recommend that the committee and the board use one quarter of the best middle scenario from the Treasurer's budget. Basically leverage the work that has been done to date.
Okay.
Thoughts and questions on the Transitional System First Quarter Budget? Steve, I just want to be clear. Does this 45.5 have a college by college breakdown for internal reporting purposes? Or is it solely a single system-wide figure?
I, I had only, I, I meant to keep it as simple as possible. And so I was treating this as system-wide. And, and what I would propose in the, you know, again, committee, feel free, we actually have, we have some time to amend this if you'd like before we present it to the board for approval tomorrow. But in my, in the resolved, I do have the notion that a full year budget, which should be developed over the summer, will supersede this. So basically come September, what will be presented is actually a budget from July 1 through June 30. And you can kind of tear this up.
So when we see fiscal 21 Q1 financial results, do you see the budget column being this 45.5 or the a budget column derived through additional work between now and September?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. If, if we are in a position to do so, I would suggest the latter because I think that will be meaningful.
Okay.
We will actually have hewed to revenue categories. In other words, we have revenues, we have expenses, we have say six or seven revenue. Well, I can actually count them, right? We have, you know, six revenue categories and nine expense categories. By September, we'll have a meaningful appraisal of those. Right now, particularly given the large amounts and different types of state funding that we anticipate, we, which was not knowable prior to this, the Treasurer's Report, right? The, the Treasurer's Report is what precipitated the state funding. I, I think that a, a Q1 reporting that is predicated on a fully developed fiscal 21 budget will be more meaningful.
Okay. Further thoughts and questions on this resolution? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the resolution as it appears on page 89, authorizing a FY 21 Vermont State Colleges System Transitional First Quarter Budget? Please say aye.
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 We have approved the resolution. Steve, I think this leads nicely into Agenda Item 8 pertaining to the meeting schedule that you're recommending to the committee from now through December.
Yes, and it's always, so I am, as Church is alluding, I'm on now page 97, the very last page of the materials. I only did it through December because as I recall, the schedule approved by the committee last year actually did go through December and included the December board meeting. So I was just assuming that we would maintain a similar schedule. But notwithstanding that schedule, we would need to add a July meeting. And I apologize, I don't know if we've actually identified a date. That's still to be determined.
We're looking at July 23rd.
July 23rd, okay. So if people want to pencil that in. And, and Sophie, also it is only an LRPC meeting. There is not also an EPSAL meeting on that date?
Correct. And the reason we were looking at doing a special EPSAL meeting was because of the Title IX regulations and the changes we need to make. But the concern is that July 23rd, we still may not have something for EPSAL to, to vote on by then, because given the very, very compressed timeframe we're under. So there will need to be another EPSAL committee meeting, but it will probably be closer to August 14th. And then we'll need board approval as well of, of whatever policy is, you know, is promulgated for the title, new Title IX regulations.
So that July 23rd meeting then, you know, the main items really, really two, plus the legislative update would be taking a first pass, sort of building on the work done with the Treasurer's Report. And, and then whatever other information is available legislatively to take a true first pass at the budgets like we would have in, say, you know, February or March of this year. A full fiscal 21 budget. And then to initiate our discussion about fiscal 22 tuition, which is, you know, yet another item that would, we would, under normal schedule, be approving tomorrow. But we haven't even broached the discussion yet. With respect to fiscal 21 tuition. So, and that would be the tuition fees room and board that was approved last June and is applicable this fall. My sense is that if anything were to happen, it would be a decrease in those rates. For example, because of primarily distanced delivery in the fall. And the way that our tuition policy, and that also follows under, falls under Policy 403, System Annual Operating Budget. But it gives the President's discretion to have lower prices in the published tuition. We actually, the board actually approves maximum tuition rates, maximum tuition fees room and board rates. So to the extent that the presidents would like in response to just the reality of COVID or the necessities driven by, by our COVID environment, to have lower tuition fees, room or board prices, you're empowered to do that already. Where we would need to revisit fiscal 21 tuition is if anybody wanted to raise prices. So is that, is that clear? And maybe I should survey the colleges. Does anybody anticipate wanting to increase any of the tuition fees room or board applicable to fiscal 21?
Any thoughts from the colleges?
Because if not, then I think we can sort of, really the focus and with respect to tuition should be fiscal 22. That may be unknowable. You know, normally what we're doing or what we've done over the last four years was in response to the AGB report, which recommended that we approve tuition a year ahead of time so that it could be used for financial aid development. Basically, if we had tuition rates set before the first of October, that would help us for this because of the prior, prior FAFSA and the ability to apply for financial aid sooner. We revisited that last year as to whether we needed to continue to approve tuition so far in advance. The sense of the colleges was that it was still helpful to do so. We may also wish to revisit that again this year as to whether a far in advance approval of tuition is warranted. Or if we would revert to practice, I believe, 2015, which was, you know, not approving until February or so for the following fall.
Thank you, Steve. Just looking at the president's, that I can see, any thoughts or comments? And I can see everyone, I think, except Elaine. So any thoughts or comments on this issue of whether you anticipate any modifications to our tuition room and board fees for either semester or for the year? Is this anything on the, on the radar screen?
It is not for us, Church.
Okay, that, that was Joyce Judy.
Ditto for Caston University.
Okay.
That makes three of us at Vermont Tech.
And same for me too at NBU.
Okay. Does that mean that with the earlier departure from students, that we do not anticipate changing our room and board fee for the fall semester?
That's correct because the students will be in class for the same length of time. At NBU and Caston, we're starting one week early, teaching through October break. So it's still 15 weeks of instruction and 15 weeks in the residence halls.
Very good. Thank you for that clarification. Anything else from the committee on this item? Steve, you said you had two items under other business. Was this the first?
And the, so the other business, two quickies. Number one is just, and I am, I'm sorry to report that unfortunately, as, as fully expected, we were downgraded from, or by Standard and Poor's on Friday. So that took our, we've been holding on with an A minus and stable rating for quite a while. And then in the beginning of May, Standard and Poor's released a kind of sweeping report that downgraded over 100 colleges, including ourselves. Champlain, not downgraded, sorry, changed the outlooks from stable to negative for over 100 colleges, including ourselves, Champlain College and St. Michael's College. And then S and P had given us forbearance. We were actually overdue to have our annual surveillance with them at the end of March. But they generously postponed that till the end of May just to give us time to respond to COVID. But as I may have said in the past, if you just ran our numbers, we were a triple B plus organization. But they, they thought that we had been taking a lot of proactive steps and had some discretion within, you know, what they call a notch. And so that is, was the basis of our A minus rating. But given just, you know, the rating report, which I'm happy to circulate and is, is available online. You know, it's COVID, largely just the revenue uncertainty introduced by COVID. And then, you know, just our general circumstance, they had to realize us as a triple B plus. And unfortunately with a negative outlook. And so until we have more clarity on, on just, you know, what our, our new operating environment is going to look like, we'll continue to have a negative outlook. We are not alone. We are, that is, that is commonplace across the higher education industry. So that is one item and we're in the process of disseminating that to the municipal securities rulemaking board requires us to actually publicize that information so that bondholders are aware. And then the other item is just an on the radar. Sorry, Church, go ahead.
Relieve that. Would you just reinforce for people though? That right now through our state intercept provisions, even though we have a triple, triple B plus rating as an institution, if we were to go out on our own, if we were to follow the pattern that you've established recently of working through the bond bank, our, our sale would, would not reflect that. Is that correct?
And that is correct, Church. And thank you for, for not letting me forget that. Yes, if we were to borrow, my strong recommendation is that we would continue to do what we've done for the last two bond issues, the 2017 bonds and the 2020 bonds. And that is to continue to leverage our ability to go through the bond bank. Whereupon the basically bondholders benefit from the state treasurer's ability to intercept our state appropriation. And that rating keys simply off the state of Vermont's rating and currently stands at a double A2 by Moody's. And so, yes, the, as a practical matter, this downgrade does not affect our cost of capital.
And Steve, have other states been impacted by the COVID environment and seeing their outlooks turn negative? Or is it just higher ed that's being hit?
You know, I, I apologize. I actually have not monitored other sectors. I know that the state recently was downgraded across the board. But that was more of a demographically driven concerns. That was actually pre-COVID that that had happened. I can report back to the committee. I would just need to go and read. I mean, it, it won't be difficult. There's plenty of literature out there. But I actually have not been following sovereign ratings. I've just been following higher ed.
Okay.
But I cannot imagine that it's good.
Thank you, Steve.
I think I've at least seen some articles about it generally and given the cause in business and the impact on revenues to states, we've certainly seen it discussed here in Vermont. The discussions I've been, it's been for downturn in the, in their ratings and certainly in that outlook. But that was just articles about it. That was not anything saying, it wasn't an S and P report or anything like that.
I, I guess another global comment is should the VSC be in a position where it needs to borrow money? You know, credit ratings and the attendant negative impact of a lower credit rating used to matter a lot more when we had interest rates. And, and right now rates are so absolutely record low that even as a, even if we were to go borrow as a triple B plus, I believe that we would borrow it something like, you know, it would have a three in front of the number, maybe a low 4%. So, and then with the state-backed rating, you know, we would, depending upon the term of the bonds, probably be borrowing at, you know, something in the ones or two percents. Just because rates are at such record lows.
Thank you, Steve. Anything else on this item, Steve, before you move to your final other business item?
Nothing else.
Okay.
And the last is just for the radar, and that would be yet another policy. And it provides a nice segue into our executive session. VSC's Policy 426 deals with leases, acquisition or sale of real estate. And Policy 426 currently includes a threshold, a minimum dollar threshold for committee review and board approval for leases only. So, and that threshold is a lease that it's either $250,000 a year or a million dollars in aggregate. But right now, any purchase or sale of property or disposition or donation or acceptance of a donation of, of real estate or ineasement or conveyance of right of way requires board approval, even if it's for $1. And so the question or the, you know, potential item for the committee and board would be to consider whether to adopt that maybe aggregate million dollar threshold that applies to leases, similarly for real estate transactions. And that might lessen the, I mean, not, not that I think we have a, a large volume of real estate transactions, but I could conceive of that potentially getting larger in the future. And that might economize the committee's workload a little bit. Right now, we have to bring you everything.
So that can go on our futures agenda. Thank you, Steve. So any further business for the committee during the public session of our, of our, the public portion of our meeting? I'll turn to public comment here in a moment. But otherwise, this would be the last thing before we go into executive session. Anything else from anyone, President Steve, Chancellor's Office? Can we wave to your friends too, David? Anything else that needs to come? Anything else that needs to come before the committee? Okay. Then let's turn to our item 10 in our agenda, which would be provision for public comment. Yasmin or Jen, whoever is managing this Zoom session, do you have any indication that someone would like to speak to the committee?
Mr. Chair, this is Jen, I can take care of that. We don't have a sign up sheet this time. So anyone who would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand electronically and we can enable your microphone and allow you to make a comment. So please.
And we would welcome any comments.
Yep, please do that now if you'd like to speak. I am not seeing anyone do so, we must not have any public comment today.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone. With that, we would transition to enter into executive session. This would, and doing so would complete the agenda for the day for those who may be watching us. We'll go into executive session, which is in a different Zoom area altogether. And we will do whatever needs to be done within that session. We'll come out of executive session. And at that point, we'll be momentarily in public session for the purpose of adjourning the meeting for the day. I hope I've said that correctly. And if that is the case, Trustee Dickinson, do you have a copy of the resolution or does, that was distributed? Okay.
Okay, so I move the Finance and Facilities Committee of the VSC Board of Trustees, enter executive session pursuant to 1 VSA Section 313 Subsection A1F for the purpose of receiving confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services. And Section 313 Subsection A1E, pending civil litigation in which the VSC is a party. Because premature general public knowledge of these discussions would place VSC at a substantial disadvantage, it is appropriate for the committee to enter executive session. And I further move the committee, enter executive session pursuant to 1 VSA Section 313 Subsection A2 to discuss negotiating or securing real estate purchase or lease options. Along with the members of the board present at this meeting and its discretion, the board invites the interim chancellor, the presidents and deans of administration for Vermont Tech and Northern Vermont University, and VSC Chief Financial Officer and interim general counsel to attend. The board may, as appropriate and permitted by law, take action during this executive session. So moved.
Is there a second? Please, thank you, Linda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of going into executive session, further, further motion just read by Trustee Dickinson, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we will now all disengage from this meeting and go to the special address for the executive session. Then when that is completed, we'll come back to this Zoom address, re-enter public session and most likely adjourn. Thank you, everyone who've been with us up to this point.
Thank you.
Hey, Church, just a quick clarification, if you, you don't need us to come back in.
Us, CTV?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
I did not anticipate that.
Great, thank you.
Adam, I will email you the call-in number for the executive session.
Oh, shoot.
Thank you. Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm counting, one, two, three, four, five, trustee.
Sorry, I was, I was muted, I was muted, you have, you have a majority here.
We do, okay.
I move, we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? We are, we, we, we we are adjourned and, and the board will convene tomorrow at 1 o'clock, Sophie, is that correct? For a full board meeting. And of course, we will go back through all of this in great detail for the other trustees. We wouldn't want them to miss any of the fun. Have a pleasant evening, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you all.
Recommend, find your first, your closest nearest adult beverage.